Michael.
Stevie.
They're doing radio.
Yeah.
A little technical difficulty.
Well, what happened was I was on the phone. I got my car and I think it wanted to switch over to the car phones like that and it went dead. It just went dead. So then I called her back and I had trouble getting through to her. Finally got the order. She said, then she couldn't connect me to the radio station. So she said, I'll call you back. So we finally got it.
Hi, I'm Ron.
My name is.
It looks good.
Thank you. Mom was very active on the board. And they were looking, she told me, and they were trying to get, uh, they would like to be. Yeah, they asked me, I was on there.
But did you see the email?
How were you?
Yeah, it's like, I have two of the boards.
I know, and that's kind of how I'm feeling too.
And they asked me again last night.
I brought all that stuff. I brought it to me.
For someone from Tulare. Yeah, so I bet my.
And the river in the order, they're just thrown up there in a pile. And they're never in any order, they're just kind of thrown up there in a pile.
Okay. I guess we're all standing there all day.
Yeah.
All right.
I think we're about ready.
I did, I did do that. That's why I talked to her a month ago.
Good morning, welcome to our scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you please stand and join me in our flag salute to be led this morning by Supervisor Ennis and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please join me in sluting our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. First item this morning is our Board of Supervisors matters. We'll take up at this time and I'll look to my colleague on the left, Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you Supervisor Ashida. Ashida, I almost called you. I was looking at Ashida down there. Sorry about that. Um, well, yesterday Supervisor Worthy and myself had a very good meeting with the View Partnership, which is made up of several of the utility companies that serve this county. And we are working on scheduling outreach events up in his district, similar to the ones that have been held over the last couple of years in Alpon, Joaquina. Um, we are also scheduling an event to be held in the community of Allen's Worth. Hopefully, we're going to be able to get that scheduled in October of this year and provide resources and opportunities for county departments as well as utilities with low-income programs to get sign-ups and expand their services in the community. Um, also, on Friday, we have a San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting, and that's actually a very important meeting this week as we are going to be renewing our health plans for next year. And it's a very interesting situation with Fresno County having a larger proportion of their employees enrolled in certain plans and Tulare County having different, the exact opposite, and how the two counties and other member entities have enrollments in HMO plans versus PPO plans and how that's going to be affecting the renewal rates based on actual trend and experience over the last few years. PPO rates have done very, very well, but on the other hand, HMO rates have not. So whether or not those rates are going to be blended and how that's going to look will affect all of our employees and their increases for next year's health plan renewals. So very important meeting that's going to be taking place on Friday. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox.
See, um, over the last fifteen years, I've been involved in city or county government. Something extraordinary happened last week. I had a meeting with the local representative from the Red Cross. That's not happened in the fifteen years. And so they're making a, I think, a valiant effort, new director, to reach out and meet all the electeds in the local area. So the meeting went very well. I would encourage a board members to meet with them. Very encouraging to see this, uh, this local outreach. Thursday, we had an interesting meeting with our Consolidated Waste Management Authority. Some of you may have heard on the radio that there is discussions of disbanding that authority. It had its place several years ago when organizations were encouraged to work together by the state, pooling their resources to obtain a good diversion rate. Now, the, uh, the effort and the focus has been shifted mostly to individual organizations. So there are some very serious discussions about what the future of that organization may be, looking for direction from also this board at a future date near, uh, nearer rather than later to give feedback. We'll have Bryce Howard come in and talk to our board about what his ideas are in regards to that. There's a sizable amount of funding left in the reserve pot, uh, that would be split up amongst the organizations that were members of that, but it looks like that organization may soon come to an end. This Wednesday, I have retirement board meeting. Last week, I was at the City of Visalia council meeting, last night at the City of Woodlake council meeting, doing the tour with Mr. Smalley and Mr. Kimball and Mr. Giuliani in regards to the transportation impact fee, discussions happening with those councils. They actually went to Farmersville last night after Woodlake. Tonight, I'll be in Lindsay and Exeter at the city council meetings for those presentations. Something to look forward to, October first appears to be the grand opening date for the Imagine New You Children's Museum here in Visalia. If you haven't seen it, they're going from a small facility that you could fit probably three of into this room here into a very nice, large, brand-new, grant-paid-for museum. They're actually going to start receiving the exhibits today. So look forward to October first for that grand opening. And we will receive a presentation next week on the Summer Night Lights, just to kind of put out a little tickler here. Dinuba again surpassed any of the other organizations with its attendance. Of course, I think they're counting feet instead of bodies. A very, very successful Summer Night Lights program that will receive a presentation here in this boardroom next week. That's all I have.
Supervisor Sheed.
Last week, I attended the rural counties supervisors meeting in Sacramento, which is comprised of thirty-four counties in the state of California. And one of the reports we received that in the Southern Sierra, the Veta Mountain Range, we have ten and a half million dead trees, pine trees, mostly ponderose pines. And that's just what they can determine this year, and we're going to have substantially more in the coming year. Another item they brought up was solid waste. Apparently, there's a move now to remove all organic materials from your trash. And I think it's an idea that they've thought up without looking at the science behind or the cost behind removing the solid waste. It's come to my attention that the solid waste that decomposes in our landfills actually help our landfills chemically in the, uh, the compounding of our solid waste. I brought up the issue about the cabin fire and about the two trees where our firefighters could have cut down two trees and prevented the cabin fire. And I was corrected in the fact that in the wilderness, each jurisdiction of the Forest Service, they set up the rules if they can use chainsaws in that wilderness. And apparently, in the Golden Trout Wilderness, which is being managed by the Sequoia National Forest, it is a local ordinance or a local rule that they could not use chainsaws. But I think they may be changing that after the last go-around we had. But it's actually up to the local jurisdiction of the Forest Service. This Friday, I'm attending a meeting about raising monies for transportation. Uh, we're having a press conference, and there's going to be supervisors from the San Joaquin Valley present. And the state's very, trying very hard to figure out how they're going to raise monies for roads and for transit. I think one of the issues I have with the state of California, when they said that we had a budget surplus this year, they gave $2 billion more to social programs, they gave over half a billion dollars to train teachers. Now, they want to raise taxes for roads. So I just have a problem with how they spend the money. So that's all I have.
Very good. Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, another note on that transportation, if you realize they've taken all the weight fees from our trucks and everything and put that in the general fund. That's one of the number-one money raisers for our highways. And one of the things that they're wanting to do is, is put $35 per vehicle tax on, plus $35 on your registration fee, and then a twelve, a twelve cent a gallon add to the fuel price. More and more taxes, and we're getting less done. What a mess. Just thought I'd add that into that. Uh, this Thursday, we're going to have a resource fair at the Emanuel Church, five to seven. That's where we have the showers set up for the people from the east side of Porterville who are without water. We also have a CSET office building up in there to take care of needs for people that maybe need to get on the bottled water program or different programs that we have. So that's going to be a good fair this, this Thursday at Emanuel Church in Porterville. Also, I'll be going to that health meeting with Supervisor Vanderpool. Supervisor Worthy also serves on that, that board and is a very critical meeting for us. So looking forward to that on Friday, nine o'clock at the retirement board office. And then I want to plug our speakers bureau. This is something that tried to, to really get going my chairman year, and I think it's a good program. If you've got a club out there or you've got a group that wants a speaker to come in, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, whether it be Resource Management, Roads Department, Health and Human Services, FIRE, this is a good program. And all you have to do is get on the computer and, and log into www dot around Tulare County dot com, and then you can look through the list of speakers available, or you can just call Julieta over at the boardroom at six-three-six-five thousand, and she will accommodate you. Just give her a couple of weeks' lead time. But we've got some very talented speakers out there that, and being in the Rotary Club that I've been, I've been in Rotary for thirty-six years, so it's find, hard to find a good program. So this is here, it's available to the, all of county, all of Tulare County, and a very good program. And I suggest that clubs look into this and start using it because it's, it's a very, very, it improves us, it improves the image of the county, and lets the people of Tulare County know what we do on a daily basis. So let's, let's look, let's, let's try to get that thing moving forward again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Well, as, as kind of alluded to by some of my other members here, a big issue still is water. Um, we have, I was at a, I'm on a steering committee for drinking water, steering committee for the out irrigation involving a surface treatment facility that there is moving forward. And in fact, we have an item on our agenda for that this morning. We met last Thursday at the Dinuba City Hall chambers. Uh, this Friday, there's a meeting in Fresno, or, I'm sorry, it's this Thursday, which I will be attending. Supervisor Sheed's not able to be there, relating to, um, creating a memorandum of understanding between different entities involving who can apply for money from Prop 1A or 1B, I guess 1B. 1B for Temperance Flat. And so that time is very critical, the essence there. We need the combination of federal and state funds to make that project happen, and, and as of right now, we're not really well organized, and we need to be because there's obviously other entities that are competing for those funds. We had an issue in Seville concerning water, even though we have a temporary, we have a situation there of supplying water through a new well and a new delivery, not a new delivery system, but an updated and improved delivery system. Unfortunately, the people have not been conservation-minded enough, and so when the system goes down, it requires us to send notice of boiling water notices to people, and, and the system had to go down for a few days, creating problems for the schools. So we're going to have a meeting up there coming soon. I forgot, I haven't got it on my calendar right now, but I think it's this week, the deal with this particular issue. We have, we are delivering temporary drinking water to the folks, but it's going to come with the condition that we are going to be implementing, um, water limitations, utilization rates, because, I mean, there's plenty of water for that community, but people are not, not being very careful about how they use it. Airboard meeting I was at last week in Fresno, first one we had for a couple of months. We took off in July. I, one of the things I thought was kind of of interest is, as an airboard, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution and Control District Board, we have to submit plans that are, that go from us. We approve these plans, these are plans of how to get into attainment with the federal standards. And as we approve a plan, it then goes to the state CARB for their approval, and then on to federal EPA for their approval. Our jurisdiction, our limitation of what we have actual authority over is limited to stationary sources. Mobile sources are under the control of the federal EPA and state CARB. As of now, as we look at, and by the way, July was the cleanest air in the San Joaquin Valley in recorded history. So we're making great progress in cleaning up the air, but when you look at the federal standards that have been adopted and they continue to ratchet down, um, we have to, we have gotten about eighty percent of the pollutants out of our air. We would need to get eighty percent of the remaining twenty percent to come into compliance. Now, we have a tremendous chart, and it shows the different sources of pollution for ozone. And when you look at the stationary sources portion of that chart, it's very small. You could eliminate every stationary source of pollution in the San Joaquin Valley and would still violate the federal standards many, many times over. So what we've given authority to our, um, staff to do is to look at a plan that if, if there's any problem of pushback from the federal EPA, of actually pushing back to them and saying, this is your responsibility. We should not be subject to penalties, which, by the way, the penalty for failure to meet these plans, goals, is the loss of your federal funding for transportation, which is a huge issue for the San Joaquin Valley. We should not be responsible for something over which we have zero control. That's your control. You have control over stationary sources, not, not the local Air Pollution Control District Board. So we're looking at assigning back to them a responsibility to achieve this air quality standard, something which was tried some years ago by the, by South Coast Air District. But I think we're going to work in tandem on this matter because really, it makes no sense why we would be held responsible for something which we have no control. Anyway, thought that was of interest, and I wanted to share that with the board and with the public. Yes, Mr. Sheed.
John Jansen, are you present today? Okay. Farmersville just hired a new city manager, and we'll introduce him next week.
That's our segue into public comments. Anybody wishing to address the board on matters which are not on today's agenda but within our jurisdiction are invited to come forward at this time, give us your name and address.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
John just arrived.
All right.
John, would you please come forward? John is the new city manager of Farmersville, and he'd like to address the board for a couple of minutes.
Welcome, John.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm very proud to be here this morning. I am the new city manager in Farmersville, and I had a chance to meet with Supervisor Ashida, and I wanted to come down and introduce myself to the rest of the board. And if you need to talk to someone regarding Farmersville, I'm the new guy, so thank you very much. I look forward to working with you closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to have you on this morning. Now, we'll take up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning during public comments is invited to come forward this time, give us your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close the public comments.
Hey, Stevie, you got one of the best.
Do we have somebody? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I wasn't sure. There was a lot of movement back and forth, but I wasn't sure anybody was coming forward. This, this will be fine. Come straight ahead, and you can use that microphone right there. Please give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Karen Gentry. My address is one-three-six-two-five, B is in, is in Boy, Avenue 320, Visaya, California. The reason there's a B is because I have a rent house in front of me. I own a farm, and we're down a dirt driveway. I'm here about the, uh, the letter that I got about from Mid Valley Disposal about the trash cans, the recycled trash cans that were delivered to everybody, saying that Tulare County was thinking about doing for the unincorporated areas what the city's doing as far as recycling's going. I appreciate the efforts. I myself personally take my recycling in on Murray and get money for it, but I have neighbors across, and I took the trash can as soon as it was delivered, although they're not going to start service until October, and moved it next to my other trash can out of the way, because the water trucks have to go by, the tractors have to go by, all that sort of thing. My neighbors across the street, wherever Mid Valley dropped them off, they're still sitting out there, waiting to be hit by a car, a tractor, a water truck, a school bus. So I appreciate the effort, but my other question is, it says that the rate fees will increase. Well, the garbage areas are divided up kind of like power areas and water districts and all those other things. So my garbage company is not actually Mid Valley Disposal, it's Waste Management. So are all the garbage companies working in conjunction with each other, or is Mid Valley Disposal now going to ask for funding from the Board of Supervisors to go into areas or roads that are not currently theirs, where they pick up the garbage to pick up the recycling once a week as part of this new program? I'm just trying to figure out if it's really as cost-effective as what everybody's hoping it's going to be. I'd just like to point out a few things that came to my mind when I first received it.
Ma'am, I'm going to direct you to our solid waste management official who's here this morning. He's in the back of the room, back there, see him in the back?
Uh-huh.
He can answer your questions a lot better than we can this morning.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here today. Anyone else wishing to address us this morning? All right, we will close the public hearing and public comments process rather. Go to our consent calendar, and item number thirty-six will be pulled for, been brought back at a future date. Are there any other items which members wish to speak to separately or separately?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to pull them. I do have two questions for four of the items, eight, nine, ten, and fifteen. The agreements with Exeter, Farmersville, Woodlake, and Lindsay for the dispatch services. I do have two quick questions before we vote on those. They're, and they're the same for all four items.
Go ahead.
Uh, first, as this board knows, years ago, we were heavily subsidizing the, uh, these agencies that we're providing those services for. First question, is this a representative of full recovery?
Uh, well, as the, as the, as the four items, Jim Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, as the four items indicate, we are, we are recovering our full costs over a ten-year period. This was at bone of contention in the consolidated dispatch efforts that we, we went down the road with, 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 with the City of Visalia. One of the things that they were wanting us to do was charge our, the, the small cities of full, their full, you know, cost recovery. It would have had, that was during the recession, it would have had a significant impact to their police operations. We pushed back somewhat, and, you know, that process kind of fell by the wayside, but this is our effort to work with the cities, give them, give them, uh, give them something to plan for, for the increases. We're in the fourth year of this cost recovery process, and we'll be fully, we'll be fully recovering costs in six years.
Okay, and so that, that very easy, and we're not recovering full cost. And then, you know, noticing, you know, the, if you look at each organization and the population that they have, the numbers don't seem to make sense. We have larger cities with smaller numbers and smaller cities, so it looks like we're just on that ten-year amortization schedule, and it has nothing to do with population.
You know, I'm not sure how the costs are allocated, and, and Debbie Vaughn will come up, and she can certainly speak better to it, but I will say that Lindsay, the, the fourth item, they just recently jumped back on board. So their number is probably most likely, you know, and we're, you know, in the first year of cost recovery and, and recovering it over ten years, but Ms. Vaughn.
Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. The dispatch service charges are not based on population, they're based on calls for the prior year. So all the costs that are associated with dispatch are calculated, both the direct and indirect costs, and there's a rate per call, and then that rate is multiplied by the prior year's calls, and then there's the increase, as Mr. Rousseau explained, over the ten years. That's how they calculate. So it's calls, not population.
Right, thank you. That was it, Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't want to pull anything, I just want to bring to the attention that we did get a bid on the 224 Deer Creek Bridge, and it came in about four hundred thousand under estimates.
Yeah, yeah, that's very good. All right, anyone from the public wish to speak to these, any of these matters on consent calendar? Seeing no one, entertain a motion? Vote for approval?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Let's cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That will take us then to our untimed items since we're not at the nine-thirty hour. And our first item is item forty-six, a request from the Sheriff's Department to approve and adopt the resolution for submission of an SB eight sixty-three application to the California Board of State and Community Corrections for up to forty million dollars for the Sequoia Field Program Facility Phase Two. Morning, Chair. Welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, members of the board, good morning to you, to our CAO and county council as well. I just want to compliment our CAO and county council with just their quick responsiveness to any issue or questions that we have. They're just so quick. We have a good county family that works very well together, as, as seen in a recent meeting as of yesterday. And so just a compliment to them. This morning, we're looking to the future of our county. As you know, AB nine hundred as well as ten twenty-two with the infrastructure of our jail facilities. We're very much looking forward to AB nine hundred with breaking ground close to January, I believe, of 2016, which is going to be a great new building, throwing us into the future of this county, as well as ten twenty-two. But what we are finding is, is that the buildings that we do have, as you know, are old. The jails that we have with our main jail and existing, some of our existing beds, if we don't look to the future of replacing those, we're going to be behind the curve. So having said that, in our futuring processes and as well as receiving some potential funding from the state, which is a benefit for us, we're asking for the approval to apply for SB eight sixty-three. Now, this morning, I've already spoken with Supervisor Ennis, who said, can you please have the assistant sheriff do all the presentation because we don't have an hour for you to give yours? So I think he was implying that I can be incredibly talkative, so I'll try and limit some of that. I appreciate Mike. But having said that, the, the funding that we're looking at is in reference to replacing some of the existing beds for the future of our, our agency as well as the county with beds that are focused towards mental health and administrative segregation. A third of our population in the jail systems are receiving some type of mental health medication. Our mental health beds that we have are near nonexistent and having to be created. There's a need for eight sixty-three if we're able to, to move forward and, and receive this allocation from the state, there's an absolute need. It meets twofold, getting rid of the listing beds that we have that are needing to be closed here very soon, within the next five to ten years, as well as the need for the mental health beds. So having said that, that's our proposal this morning. I will turn it over to our assistant sheriff, Scott Logue, numbers and the details of the act.
Morning, Board, thank you.
Morning.
Before we begin, I need to ask the board to make a couple corrections to our original board agenda. to January, I believe, of 2016, which is going to be a great new building, throwing us into the future of this county, as well as 1022. But what we are finding is, is that the buildings that we do have, as you know, are old. The jails that we have, with our main jail and existing, some of our existing beds, if we don't look to the future of replacing those, we're going to be behind the curve. So, having said that, in our futuring processes and as well as receiving some potential funding from the state, which is a benefit for us, we're asking for the approval to apply for SB 863. Now, this morning, I've already spoken with Supervisor Ennis, who said, can you please have the Assistant Sheriff do all the presentation, because we don't have an hour for you to give yours?
[laughing]
So, I think he was implying that I can be incredibly talkative, so I'll try and limit some of that. I appreciate Mike. But having said that, the, the funding that we're looking at is in reference to replacing some of the existing beds for the future of our, our agency, as well as the county, with beds that are focused towards mental health and administrative segregation. A third of our population in the jail systems are receiving some type of mental health medication. Our mental health beds that we have are near nonexistent and having to be created. There's a need for 863 if we're able to, to move forward and, and receive this allocation from the state. There's an absolute need. It meets twofold, getting rid of the listing beds that we have that are needing to be closed here very soon, within the next five to 10 years, as well as the need for the mental health beds. So, having said that, that's our proposal this morning. I will turn it over to our Assistant Sheriff, Scott Logue, numbers and the details of the act.
Morning, Board. Thank you.
Morning.
Before we begin, I need to ask the board to make a couple corrections to our original board agenda item. Number one, as the county requested, the FY 2015-16 budget includes an SB 863 cash match. Our request no longer needs to include a budget adjustment, so an odd 308. And secondly, we request the following clause be deleted from the board resolution in the agenda, end item, whereas the county is seeking funding preferences for submittal of the complete initial real estate due diligent package. So if we can make those adjustments? Mike, do you know which one? There's a lot of them on here. Bless you. Mike, which date was your PowerPoint? Pardon me? Date was your PowerPoint. There's a bunch. Okay, there it is, okay. Here we go. Okay, the, the focus of the 863 program put forth by the state is to renovate existing, compacted, outdated, and unsafe housing. They're giving away a total of, well, they're granting $500 million statewide. We're a mid-sized county, as you know, so we'll be granted 400, or $40 million, and there must be a 10% county matching fund. You probably know all this stuff from the 900 and the 1022 presentations, but we thought it was important that you get an opportunity to view it again. Our main jail was opened in 1962. It currently is rated at 272 beds. The men's correctional facility was open in 1940, but we turned it into a jail in about 1986, the RTC, and it's been expanded on and renovated ever since then. It currently has 366 beds. 64 of those beds are unavailable due to the inhabitation of the facility, of that unit. Bob Wiley was opened in 1986. It was rated at 384, and we currently, it was retrofitted and now has 690 beds. The pre-trial was opened in 2001, has 384 beds. Sequoia Field Program Facility planned for opening in 2019 is 244 beds, and of course, the AB 900 with South County Detention Facility is going to be 527 beds. So we have a lot of beds coming online, but with the changes in the realignment system for AB 109, our daily average population has increased, and we anticipated that it will continue to increase. The Vanner study just came out on the next slide, and it shows that our current capacity is 1,712 beds. They recommend that the life expectancy of the MCF, Men's Correction Facility, ends in 2019, the main jail 2020, and that will cause us to lose 574 beds. The detention needs assessment says we're going to need an additional 88 beds, more than what we currently are slotted for by 2019, and 332 by 2020. So SB 863 will be located at the current road camp, our Sequoia Field. It'd be rated for 244 beds, single and double cells, and then dormitory style, and the BSCC says anything with more than four beds is a dormitory, so you won't always see the big, huge dormitories that you're accustomed to seeing today. It will have a mental health unit for women offenders, similar to what we have at the South County Detention Facility, and it will have a medical unit for chronically ill inmates. We use the high reliability assessment tools such as Compass, SASE, and Career Scope to make a determination on who fits into that facility. This is the existing 1022 facility, and the, the dormitories, you can see on the bottom right, and in the upper, upper right. The SP, I had a question about that. I didn't know what that was, but apparently that's staff parking, the new acronym, SP. Okay. So these two facilities, hopefully if, if we are awarded the grant and the county allows us to apply, will be on the same plot of land, and they will have a common corridors and be adjoining to each other. Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm glad to see the timelines on here. That's, we get those questions all the time. When are you going to close this facility? When are you going to open that facility? So this is a great tool for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I will remind Supervisor Cox, those are suggested closing dates, not hard dates.
Mister Chair, this is on-
If we're able to do that wonderful, but-
This is on paper, and I'm going to hold it, I'm going to hold the sheriff to it.
[laughing] I don't think he's the problem. It's down there. Okay. It's always the money. Okay, any other questions, comments?
No questions. I'd move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Ashida. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Good luck. This is a competitive, didn't say that. You, you made it sound like it was automatic, but it is a competitive bid to process, so. Very good. We'll move now to our, our timed items. And our first item is number three, a public hearing, a request from Solid Waste to approve ancillary fees and commercial rate increases for commercial and multifamily use customers in the various service areas effective October 1, 2015. Good morning.
Good morning. Bryce Howard, Director of Solid Waste. Before we get started on that, I'd like to do just a quick update on where the Solid Waste Department is, and specifically the Enterprise Fund, and just really quickly what we have coming, and then we'll get into the public hearing. So real quickly, the Solid Waste Department in 2014 was struggling a bit, as we all know. It had some, some issues and some challenges. As you can see on this, our expenses year over year haven't really, haven't changed much. Our revenue increased by about $4 million dramatically, and therefore we get a net positive. All of that positive really is going to be taken up by using for future cell development. There's, it's, it's going to be tight to do that, but I think we're going to have enough money to sort of carry on for the next 10 years or so, or 20 years. So far this year, we've started off well. We're right on budget, 1.1 million in revenue. This time last year, we were at .8. Things are going well. What's new, what's coming up? City of Visaya and the City of Tulare are both starting to deliver a sludge. They view that as a fairly significant cost savings for them. We think next month, we've been doing an evaluation on transfer stations, cost effectiveness, possibly reopening them, other things. We'll have that evaluation for you next month. Mid Valley Waste Disposal Agreement is the only company that we don't have a disposal agreement with that collects franchise waste or waste inside Tulare County. They collect material from four of the smaller cities, Lindsay, Farmersville, Exeter, and Woodlake. That agreement's just about done. We'll probably have that for you next month as well. We're going to be closing the Visaya landfill. The old cell will be going through closure starting in the fall. That's a significant undertaking. Significant amount of dollars that we've already accrued for, that'll be going forward. Also, we discovered a post-closure fund credit of $1 million here, but really it's more like 1.5 million, one time into us. Some of the staff were able to recognize that we were overfunded in that area, and the state's going to allow us to take back some of that money. Lastly, we're working on renewable natural gas out at the Visaya landfill, just starting that. There's an opportunity to take some of that gas that's coming off there now, actually clean it up and put it in the trucks or use it for some other type of vehicle.
Bryce, is that facility that, that generates electricity out there, is that operational now?
The, so the gas, the gas facility out Visaya landfill specifically is not operational right now. It's under contract. That contract allows us not to have to pay for the flare that is mandatory out there, but it's not generating any renewable power right now. The vendor, who's currently under contract with us, feels like it's not cost-effective. We're looking at other means and other mechanisms that might relieve them of that contract and might be some benefit to us. Future mandates that are coming up. One thing to keep in mind, that what we're going through right now, and what the public hearing's about, is commercial recycling. But we have another rule that's coming up that's affecting us next year, and really will hit us pretty hard in 2019, which is commercial organics recycling. And then, more than likely by around 2020, there'll probably be a rule that'll come through that says no organics in the landfill at all. So that will force all of us to do commercial, residential organic recycling. Also, there's significant regulations that have just been put in place and going to be affecting the composting industry. That's where a lot of our organics has to go, is to composting, and the, the regulations that are coming out are very stringent and very impactful monetarily. So it's going to change the dynamic of solid waste in the next couple years. Also, greenhouse gas emissions, as you were talking about earlier, that's going to be fairly significant as well, coming down the road. So today, we're here to talk about mandatory commercial recycling and to go through a public hearing on the rate increase. AB 341, passed in 2011, requires commercial multifamily recycling, and requires businesses with more than four cubic yards per week and family units of five or plus more to do recycling. Our franchised agreements that we passed back in June have that part in there. It requires a, was done in June, June 16th. We're requesting a 17% rate increase on the commercial rate to pay for that recycling opportunity. And also, we're looking for some standardization of the ancillary fees as well. Ancillary fees are being charged to our customers now. We're looking to standardize those as part of the franchise agreements. We're going to implement this on October 1st. We've put out public notice. 5,400 customers have been, have been notified. Presentation. So, I'm here requesting for opening up for a public hearing, and to approve the rates that are 17% commercial rates that are included.
Any questions?
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Couple of questions. Bryce, when was the last commercial rate increase?
About three years ago.
Three years ago?
I think there was an overall rate increase, three or four years ago.
And, and do you remember what the percentage was of that?
No, I don't. I think it was 5%.
10%, so over a four-year period, 27% increase?
And we hope that this commercial recycling actually increased due to recycling gives the opportunity for somebody to right-size their container. Hopefully, it gives them the opportunity to lower the size of their trash container, which effectively lowers the rate, because they now have a recycling container to utilize. So we're hoping that our customers take advantage of that, or can take advantage of the recycling, and really, there's no real additional cost to them, maybe even a slight reduction.
Okay, and then the, the second question that I have, you know, I know that the state mandates diversion rates, and so a lot of the material that is coming from commercial waste generators that has recycling in the waste bins is diverted when it gets to the MRF at the hauler's facility. And so, because this is going to be done, this work will be done by the actual commercial waste generator and not by the hauler, shouldn't it? I, I'm kind of not seeing the justification for an increase if the work's going to be done by the hauler. So maybe just clarify a little bit there.
So, the hauler has to put another truck out, has to obviously supply that can, and that personnel to actually go pick up that material. Now, it's being separated into a single can, but that has to be separated even more, maybe four or five different commodities out of that can. And that takes a lot of energy and a lot of effort. That's where that additional cost comes from.
Any other questions? Supervisor Ashida.
We're looking for a 17% rate increase. How much of, percentage-wise, of this increase is really as a result of all these new state regulations on wasteful?
It's a direct impact of state regulations. All, all of that is a state regulation. That whole 17% is because a state mandated commercial recycling law.
Any other questions?
If I can, there's, this is not the end of it either. There's state mandates coming down. You talked about the digestibles, you know, the microbes and all that. There's mandatory recycling programs for large, you know, businesses like Costco or stores that generate a lot of vegetable waste or food waste. They have to actually do another step in addition to this. So, the solid waste is getting really complicated, and it's all mandated by the state, and there is, there's not, you know, very much room to turn left or right. So, having looked at these, I, I think these are very reasonable. Even comparing them to what I was paying 10, 11 years ago in the city, these rates are comparable, comparable to what I was paying 10 years ago. So I, I'm not opposed to these rates at all.
And, and just one quick add-on. I, I really appreciate you pointing out the fact that a lot of these commercial haulers or the commercial waste generators could actually see a decrease in rate, or in, in costs that they're paying and incurring each month by being able to divert a significant amount of what would have just been waste, and they would have had to pay for maybe two hauls a week or, or something, and now be able to just go down to one haul, plus recycling, so.
Or container sizes. Okay. This time, we'll open up your public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter, invite them to come forward this time. Seeing no one, and I think Michael's standing in the back is not coming forward to this. We will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Motion by Supervisor Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes.
Before we vote, this is just the beginning. The 17% increase is only the beginning, because the state has made it so difficult for us to compost. It's, it's a regulatory issue, and don't look at the haulers as being the culprits of this. It's the state of California.
Right. And there's additional, you know, requirements that were, that are going to come before this board as, as we look at these new regulations. They're driving the diversion rate from 50% to 75%.
Correct.
And this is one example, which I think I somewhat appreciate, which oftentimes we have regulations that are foisted by the state or the federal government upon, oftentimes it'll be the commercial or the, or the regulated industry, and we don't always see those costs upfront. Here, here the public is paying, seeing these costs. We're seeing these costs. This is a, this is a regulatory cost, which is another way, essentially, of imposing a tax on people. When you pass a regulation which requires businesses or people to do certain things that cost more money, another way of looking at that is, it's like another tax. Anyway, votes have been cast, and they are unanimous. Thank you, Bryce. We'll take up item number four, another public hearing, and this is a request from a resource management agency to approve the change of zone, number PZ 13-007. Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, County CAO and County Council, Mike Washington, Tulare County Army. Today, we're presenting for your consideration a change of zone. Summary of the project, this is, the applicant is Mary Lou Lopez, Saints and Center Gentlemen's Club. The general plan designation for the site is light industrial. Current zoning is C2, general commercial. We're here today because the adult-oriented business ordinance requires a location other than NC2. The environmental document here is the category exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines for existing facilities, and on, in June, the Planning Commission approved the category exemption and recommended approval of the zone change to your board. The project's located at 807 South Mirage, south of the city of Lindsay. The site's a little over a third of an acre. It's currently zone C2. The immediate adjacent parcels are also zone C2, and then further to the southwest and east land is zoned A1, and to the north is the city of Lindsay. The adult-oriented business ordinance was passed in July 2006, and it only allows those uses within the M1, M2, and C3 zones. There's distance requirements from specific land uses such as schools, churches. This particular project meets all of those guidelines, and there was a provision for existing businesses to come into compliance within five years after the adoption of the ordinance. Project history, the site was operating under a use permit established in 2002 to allow live entertainment, dancing, and alcohol. As I stated earlier, the adult business-oriented ordinance came in in July of 2006, giving them five years to apply for a zone change. They came to the RMA, and PRC 11013 for change of zone was started, the process moving. Change of zone application then was presented in 2013, and there's needed some, some building improvements and rehabs and ADA compliance stuff that needed to be done, so we put the extension, extension of time on the project until those were completed, which they were last November. Business license- Business license was approved and the RMA was directed to process the change of zone by your Board of Supervisors in January of this year, and that's what brings us here today. The city and the county has an MOU. We've consulted closely with city staff. The city council of Lindsay considered this matter back in January and didn't have any comment as long as the business is conforming and legal. And the Assistant City Planner reaffirmed the city's position during the June Planning Commission meeting. Noticing of this, in addition to the required newspaper noticing, other interested parties were notified, including all the applicants, agents, and attorneys, all individuals, local agencies who spoke previously at the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, as the case may be, and all individuals who requested special notice, and of course, all of the surrounding properties within 300 feet of the subject site. So again, the project description is this is a change of zone from C2 general commercial to C3 service commercial to bring an existing adult entertainment establishment into conformance with the zoning ordinance. And that would conclude staff's report. Any questions?
Are there any questions for members?
There are. One of the issues before we had, Mike, were calls for service to this location. Do we have that updated information?
I do not have any updated from what was occurring back in the previous meetings with those supervisors in January and before.
Okay. And you said it's in here in one liner about the building improvements being completed. So final inspections have been performed and everything was brought up?
Everything is up to, yeah, everything's up to standard.
Okay. It was just a one liner, I want to make sure.
Any other questions, comments? All right, it's a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing this time. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter, item number four, invite you to come forward at this time. Mike Monroe, if you'd like, sir, and give us your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Brian Spahners. I'm with the city of Lindsay. I just want to reaffirm what's been reported here. The city is on board with this as long as they're legally conforming. If there's any questions for the city of Lindsay, happy to answer them. It's pretty straightforward.
Questions? Nope, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else here wishing to speak to this matter? No, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of this zone change.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Van Pol. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Supervisor Sheed. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. That'll take us to item number five, a public hearing, a request from Resource Management Agency to approve the change of zone number PZ 10-002, Kennedy Meadows Restoration LLC on 58 acres of MR 217. And there's a lot of other information. I'll let the staff board speak for itself.
Thank you again, Mike Washington, RMA. Today, for your consideration is a change of zone request, PZ 10002 in Kennedy Meadows. Project summary, the applicant is Kennedy Meadows Restoration LLC, Simon Jacobs and Simon of California Partnership. This was, the applicant originally applied in 2010. Location is in Kennedy Meadows, 264 acres. And the environmental document that was prepared was mitigated negative declaration consistent with state CECL guidelines. In December of 2014, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and had made a recommendation of denial. The Planning Commission expressed concerns regarding the housing density was one of their primary concerns, nighttime light pollution for the night sky, noise pollution, concerns regarding septic and road capacity issues. The Board of Supervisors is the ultimate authority in making decisions regarding zone changes and taking into consideration the Planning Commission recommendation, public comments, and other factors. The description of this project is a change of zones on 58 acres of MR 217 mountain residential, five acres minimum, to CO, commercial recreation zone, and to change the zoning on 206 acres from MR 1742, which is a minimum of 40-acre parcels, to a minimum of 10-acre parcels. The commercial aspect is along Kennedy Meadow roads, just above the number 21 there. This project has been moving quite a bit in the last 72 hours, I'd say. And we've talked with the applicant, and he's willing to make some revisions in the scope here and eliminating the commercial aspect of the project. The project, the 58 acres is zoned M, is zoned mountain residential, five acre minimum. If it was to go to commercial, it'd be two and a half acre minimums. However, the likelihood of development would be wanting to put houses on, and houses have to have a minimum of five acres in Kennedy Meadows. So in case a commercial development were to come forward, we would look at that as on a case-by-case thing. But for now, the commercial aspect has been removed. And then on the residential zoning, to go with 40-acre minimum, would be reduced to 20-acre minimums on the northwest 160 acres and then 10-acre minimums on the south 40 acres, which results in the total potential density of the plan as existing, as we entered this, was 43 lots. This would bring it down to 12 lots. This is a visual of what we're looking at, what I just tried to describe. You would eliminate the commercial and the area up there would be to 20-acre minimums instead of 10. Project history, I just want to make a clarifying statement that this project complies with the general plan, specifically the mountain plan and the Kennedy Meadows subarea plan. The plan was adopted by the board in 1986, amended in '92, and affirmed by the general plan update in 2012. And I just want to also make it clear that this is not a division of land. This is a zone change that's consistent with the adopted general plan. Any subsequent land division would come forward with a subdivision map and go through all those requirements, CECL requirements, and additional conditions. This is one of our legacy projects that's been back from 2007 originally. I listened on the audio to 2007, and Connie Conway was the chair at the time, I believe, and Henry Hashton and George Feeney were the original signatures on it. So this is a long-term project that's been hung up for quite a while. We'd like to get to some resolution on that matter. Originally, it was proposed over 400 acres, and it would have been 64 lots. Then it was whittled down to 260-some acres, 43 lots, and now we're looking at low over 200 acres of 12 lots. So it's been reduced, the scope has been reduced greatly. The Planning, the Planning Commission is concerned that there would be unpredictable density. They brought up the idea and the thought of the second unit ordinance, statewide ordinance for allowing a second unit by right. There is a way, which is out there, the county has its own ordinance for second units. And so one way to avoid that is to have a map that has CCRs associated with it, and then that would restrict it to one unit per lot. And that can, that overrides the state law. So we, it can be reduced to one lot. So therefore, second residents and mobile homes would not be allowed, and these measures would be included in the CCRs. Currently, the maximum build-out on the mountain residential is one per lot plus one for each 40 acres. So actually, potentially, there's five lots right now. They could build out to 10 houses right now. This project would allow 12 parcels as modified and restricting to one dwelling unit. So potential capacity is only two dwelling units more than full build-out in maximum either way.
I just want to ask a question now. So is the recommendation today going to be to include the CCR provision? Is that what you're recommending?
For the maps, when the maps come in. Because again, this is just the zone change, but that would be required on the map. Planning Commission was concerned about impacts of nighttime sky. The potential impact is addressed in the IS MND and has mitigation measures, including maximum shielding light and maximum wattages, no uplight and glare from illumination sources. So there's steps in there and provisions to reduce that. And then because of the modified scale, the project would greatly reduce potential impacts to night sky as well. So there's really not going to be, with 12 additional houses over hundreds of acres, it's not going to really impact the night sky. Noise pollution was another concern, specifically about generators out there. The impact again is addressed, and there's mitigation measures requiring generators to be properly sized, equipped with mufflers, and housed inside structures designed to abate the noise to 50 decibels or less of property lines. Also, as technology advances, more and more people are using solar panels and storage devices rather than generation. So that technology is starting to go away, and we're bringing in a cleaner, green technology for that. Septic systems, there was a discussion about anaerobic digesters instead of the septic tank and leach lines because of the density of the project. And again, the scope has been greatly reduced. The Kennedy Meadows plan, as policy requires, projects to provide adequate and proper facilities for the disposal of sewage affluent. Again, there's mitigation measures, and everything has to be with the state regulations. And one comment that is that about 87% of this area is occupied as vacation or second homes, so you don't have the full impact of a full-time family living in a house all the time for that. Water was another issue. As policy requires development projects to provide adequate and safe supply of domestic water, all the land division development projects require preliminary and final geological hydrological rapport indicating that there's sufficient availability of water. Historically, Kennedy Meadows hasn't had too much issues with water. Now, we're in the drought, and everybody is affected by the drought. But traditionally, their water supply has been fairly steady. I talked to environmental health, and recently, the last 18 months or so, about four permits for wells have been there as opposed to the 200 or 2,000 permits that have been throughout the rest of the county. So there hasn't been a lot of activity there. Road capacity is another concern, that you can get too many people up there. The road is average width is between 26 and 30 with a 60-foot right-of-way. This is a standard road width, allowing passing vehicles to pass. The road sees ongoing maintenance as indicated by activity last fall for pothole patching, snow removal in the winter, debris removal, and some shoulder repair and washout. So the county maintains that road. And for the levels of development, the plan back in '86 analyzed the road, and they said that in their studies that it could capacity of 2,000 vehicles, we're looking at probably about 400 vehicles. But there's enough capacity there on the road. Pacific Crest Trail, there are concerns about keeping the area pristine near the Pacific Crest Trail. As policy, the Kennedy Meadows plan preserves integrity of the Pacific Crest Trail. According to plan, residential uses are determined to be compatible with the trail. The proposed change of zone contains no segment of the Pacific Crest Trail. The residential area is approximately one mile east of the trail. There's a private airport strip between the trail and where this housing potential could go. So therefore, the proposed change of zone will not impact trail. The notice of public hearing was mailed and emailed to 62 property owners and other interested parties on August 10th. The notice was published in Viceroy Times Delta on August 12th. And in the recent days, RMA has received numerous correspondence regarding this project, both for and against about 35.
I was going to say, I thought we got like 64. So you sent out 64 notices. We got about 64 letters for or against.
If, well, if you want to do the breakdown, it's slightly more opposed than for. I think the count that I had before I left the office was 17 opposed, 13 in favor. But after you start looking, there's, multiple letters were sent to multiple places that they were actually the same letter sent to multiple people, so. This is by no way a technical map, but this is just kind of highlighting, this is me at 2:00 in the morning this morning putting this together. This is approximately where the location would be. The four square up at the top is what I'm talking about, the 20-acre minimums. And the square down to the south is 10-acre minimums. The commercial that was eliminated would have been along the stretch of Kennedy Meadows Road there. Pacific Crest Trail is off the screen to the left out of this picture. The Kennedy Meadows subplan area, the mountain plan, allows within one mile of the primary development area, which is basically 1,000 foot each way from the center line of Kennedy Meadows Road, within one mile of that, for parcels minimum size not less than 10 acres and no greater than 40 acres, if the decision-making body determines the Monarch Deer Migration Corridor would not be significantly affected. Approval of mountain residential zoning with the residential lot density between one family per 10 acres and one family per 40 acres within this development area shall be in accordance with case-by-case evaluation of such request. This site is clearly within the one-mile range of the development corridor. So again, it's consistent with the approved and the adopted Kennedy Meadows plan. So the recommendation from Resource Management Agency is to approve the IS MMD and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and change of zone as detailed in your agenda item with the following revisions pursuant to the modified project scope. No commercial zoning on the 58 acres. Change of zone from mountain residential 40-acre minimum to mountain residential 20-acre minimum on the northwest 160 acres. Change of zone from mountain residential 40-acre minimum to mountain residential 10-acre on the southern 40. And authorize RMA staff to take all necessary action in order to implement this decision. Again, this is the way that would look. And then, alternative to that, your board and your board's wisdom may choose to have all of them either approve the plan as proposed, approve the plan with all minimum 10-acre parcels, which is consistent with the Kennedy Meadows plan. So leave it at that discretion, but that's pretty much where we're at right now. And I know there's a lot of people here that'd like to speak to this matter. So if there's any questions you have of staff?
Michael, Supervisor Cox?
I have a question. Who's going to enforce the CCRs on these lots?
Well, CCRs are requirements of, if there's an association, we could have a homeowners' association or something like that. The county wouldn't get in that. But that's where a neighbor that's having a problem with it, there's remedies outside of the county government.
That's one of the complaints that I was getting, that people come up there and just crazy heck, and there's no way to get anybody there to help. And, you know, it's just, to me, this needs to be enforced. And especially with the generators and all that stuff, this has to be enforced. That's my comment.
So it's difficult to tell, your best map is actually the one with the little white lines on it. So where does everyone else live? And what's the, what are the size of those lots that they're on? I can see, looks like up above, the top part of this plan is probably where a lot of residents are. There's a few over here. How big are the lots are they on and how many of them have anaerobic digestors?
There's a lot of lots. There are five acres, two and a half acres, and then up to larger ones as well. So there's a huge mix of that. None of it is real densely improved.
But there's a lot of?
There's a lot of smaller parts, yes.
Within, on this map?
Yeah, just north and along the road, yeah.
And how many anaerobic digestors we have up there?
I don't believe there's any, but I wouldn't know for a fact.
So everyone's on septic.
All right. Any other questions? Will we open the public hearing? We're open the public hearing. I know the number of people are here today, and we want to hear all of you, but you will be limited to three minutes. And so as you come forward and give us your testimony, be mindful of that. If you come up and somebody's already given your spiel and you want to just say, "I agree with that person," that would be fine, too. You don't need to repeat. So we will open the public hearing at this time, and please come forward. You can use either microphone. And we would request you give us your name and address.
Mr. Chair, I, I would request that each person, because I'm going to ask, how lo- how large is the lot they live on and do they have a septic, yes or no?
Okay.
I'd like to hear that.
Very good. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, I'm Donna Shamley with Roberts Engineering, the engineering firm on this project, three four two North Second Street, Porterville, nine three two five eight. I appreciate all that our RMA staff has done working with us on this project for the last four and a half years. And what we've come up with, I feel, is a very good compromise on some of the issues that some of the people in the area have taken up. I do not own a lot in the area and so I don't have a septic tank. And I'm here to answer any engineering questions you might have.
All right, are there any questions by staff, or by members of the board really? None?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else we should address this morning? Morning, sir.
Morning.
Yeah, either one, that's fine.
My name's Tim Heflin, I live at nine eight oh three one Kennedy Meadows Road, and I assume everybody got the letter I sent yesterday, the two-page letter. And I was rushed, I left some things off, along with your eighty percent vacancy on the weekenders that come up. Most of the weekenders come up, bring their own food, their own gasoline and everything from their hometowns wherever they live. They really don't spend a lot. Many bring their own building materials up from there. And, I mean, sometimes they go to the store to show when they have visitors or something, but they don't really support the local economy. Also, we've had more break-ins and burglaries in the last five years and in the last two decades before that. It's all weekend places are vacant and they see one and then they hit three or four right next to it. And very few have been solved. I've been here since, since nineteen sixty-seven, I've spent most summers, all but sixteen up there, and I came home at least twice a year in that sixteen years. I've seen the changes. And there was thirty people when I moved there in seventy-two, there's about forty-five people now. We are surrounded by wilderness. There will never, ever be electricity there. It would take an act of Congress to change it and then you'd have to try to get up nine mile underground. So we will always have generator problems. That's not something that's going to go away. And, see, I'm running out of time here. One of the things I left off, I see it's been addressed on that commercial thing, oh, I wanted to bring up those forties to turn to twenties. Those are surrounded by forties or larger parcels, there are no small parcels right next to those. But I won't take too much more of your time, but I want to bring up, it's not the county's responsibility to ensure somebody makes a profit off of land speculation. There isn't a need for more of these smaller properties, there's always properties for sale, there's more properties for sale by private property than with realtors. And many of the people that have the smaller properties get tired of the problems and go looking for big properties. So I just want to, hope you don't ignore our situation. Second time in nine months, we've had to drive up here four hours to present all this. And I hope you please take your own planning commission's recommendations into consideration or maybe we should just disband the planning commission and save everybody some time and money.
Mr. Heflin, how big is your lot?
Do you have any questions for me about anything I wrote?
How big's your lot?
Seventy-two acres, seventy-one point something.
And you have septic?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're bordered by the Smith Ranch that's eighty acres and the Carr Fordig behind me that's a hundred and sixty acres. And between the three of us, we've owned our land for over two hundred years and been using it. I'm the shortest at forty-two years that we've been on the property. And everybody else there has been the forties or the nineteen twenties.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Erickson. I live in Huntington Beach at one zero zero nine two Meredith Drive. I'm a senior scientist, a physicist by training. I'm chief technology officer for a company called Spectrum Scientific. I've won a couple of awards in my forty-four years of as an optical person, one of which is helping fix the Hubble Telescope. I got a Public Surface Award for that. I have ten acres, which I bought from Mr. Simon, two five-acre parcels, I guess that has now been changed, no longer on the table in terms of a subdivision, thank you very much. I'd like to talk about the mitigated monitoring and reporting and just, it's been discussed at length, so I just want to ask the council to take action here and to do something to make these enforceable. Don't want to spend the rest of my life fighting with my neighbors. I think the, the plan is, is excellent in terms of Kennedy Meadows and provides long-needed controls over what's done there. Let's see, let me change pages here. There's a, there's a larger problem though that we're facing countywide and worldwide, and that is fresh water supply. There's a new set of satellites that, that have been put up that measure gravitational recovery. And they show that California is under a severe drought. It's been up for twelve years. And on the left is a, an image from June two thousand fourteen. It measures actually aquifers, so it measures groundwater in rocks and under the ground and all of that by gravitational attraction. The long-term effects of the drought and the pumping are clear from, from graphs here. It's been, there's been a deficit since nineteen sixty-two, even with wet years. There've been a lot of wells, I, I don't have to tell you how many wells have been dug here. I have something that says that there are fifteen hundred and sixty-two wells that have failed in Tulare County. There are three, thirty-eight hundred wells that have been permitted since January of two thousand fourteen, I hope the numbers are correct. Kennedy Meadows Plan was, is excellent, but it was done during wet years and isn't consistent with the drought. Sierra Nevada drought is a disaster in the making. I think we're seeing that in the sequoias that are having issues and trouble. The drought's sixty-three trillion gallons of water for the west, that's more than five gallons per mile to the nearest star, if you want to think in astronomical terms, it's huge. Tulare County is in severe drought. It's clear that the available groundwater for replenishment of wells is suffering. There's a picture there showing.
Wrap it up. Any finishing comments? Want to make a finishing comment?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank the, the planning commission and Mr. Simon for the work that they've done in, in the mitigation portion of this and ask that, that the council make these enforceable for Kennedy Meadows. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to clarify, the reference to council, I believe refers to your board, not to me, in terms of making things enforceable.
Well, we understand.
And in regard to enforcement, if there were violation of conditions which rose to the level of a public nuisance, the county would have standing to bring an action for enforcement, injunction, whatever. If not, then the sole remedy for enforcement is, lies with the, the affected neighbors, the affected property holders. I just wanted to clarify that.
Anyone else we should address this morning? Good morning. Oh, can you get that mic, look closer to your microphone?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Moreno and I'm part of the Carr Fordig property, we have a hundred and sixty.
Or handle trouble, can you pull that right up close to your mouth, I have a little trouble hearing you.
My name is Cynthia Moreno, there I am. My address is one four two zero three Anzana Road in Victoryville, California.
And your name again was?
Cynthia Moreno.
Thank you, Cynthia.
I've submitted letters twice, the last hearing and also last week. And three things I don't see on the letters of concern from your last board hearing was the Indian artifacts that we have on our property up there. The, I'll call it the four-square white at the top, we actually bordered that property. And I appreciate going from ten acres to twenty acres, I, I get what they're trying to say, but I think if you leave it at forty acres, you're more rural, you're gonna get more rural people up there that are more respectful for the land. Since our property is right there, we know that there's Indian artifacts up there, we've already had people trampling on our property to get to that and to take that. And we're just trying to preserve what we have. That particular valley right there, it's, there's, it's untouched, it's pristine. I know we've gone through this before, but I cannot tell you enough about how we're trying to keep that as-is. You know, California's so overpopulated. And here you have this, this gift up here that is just, we go there to get away, we get there to shut down our kids and have them appreciate the land and get rid of the electronics and, and we just really, it's so important to our family that we keep our, our land respected as-is and I just don't think that this is the answer.
Cynthia, I don't want to stop you, but, and I won't cut into your time, but how many acres do you have?
Uh, we have a hundred and sixty acres up there, all forty acres. Uh, we actually have a well up there and that's about all the improvement we've done at this time. My grandmother's original one-room cabin is still up there, in which we're, you know, we circle that to camp, but we do have a trailer up there, you know, that sort of thing. And I think if we drop it down to smaller acreage, we're looking at less requirements on that land. Who's going to go there and see if there's Indian artifacts found? Who's going to stop that project once they start grading and, you know, doing their thing up there? So it's just, it's a land concern as well, but we just appreciate your time. We all drove five, five and a half, six hours to get up here today to, to make sure you saw our letters and that, that were being heard.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? No, thank you.
I'm William Ferguson, fifteen thirty-nine North China Lake Boulevard, Ridgecrest, California. I've owned properties in Kennedy Meadows since two thousand and six. I have eighty-three acres, two wells, and septic, percolation tests are done, but I don't have, I don't have any buildings at this point. I urge the Board of Supervisors to accept the RMA's work. They clearly put a lot of work and time into it and they are well-informed and very diligent. So I think that you should accept their recommendations. I, in fact, was in favor of the more broad, this just, just got modified today. So I was in favor of the broad, but there's, it's a no-brainer to approve what they've compromised on. Community Meadows is a small community. There are forty-eight year-round people in the summer, it gets to maybe seventy full-time people. Parcel Book three-ten is the only area around Kennedy Meadows proper. There are other parcels in the Kennedy Meadows Study Area, but only three-ten would have any effect whatsoever on development in Kennedy Meadows property, proper. There are only two hundred and ninety-seven residentially zoned parcels in that entire book, so that's the maximum that could ever be. Currently, as of Metro Scan August seventh of this year, ninety-four have values greater than thirty thousand. In two thousand and seven, the fire department surveyed the properties and found a hundred and eighty-six parcels with structures that potentially would need fire protection. So that means there's probably a hundred and, only a hundred and fifty parcels that haven't had some sort of use or development. And even a lot of those are used by weekenders that come up and, and I think it's reasonable to think that over a long period of time, those people aren't going to leave their land just sitting there, they're going to do something with it. But even if all of those parcels are developed, Kennedy Meadows will never, ever be crowded. And it won't grow because it can't grow. It's surrounded by wilderness and Forest Service and BLM, there's just no way it can get any bigger. And so, I mean, if you want to really stretch it, you might get three hundred people there, but I doubt it. Some comments on, on some of the other negatives, artifacts have been picked over for a hundred years, so I don't think there's anything significant left anyway. Code enforcement, I think we've had a code enforcement officer getting grumpy bears to clean up their lots just lately. So they go up there and they do take action. And I'm in favor of that. The impact on the Pacific Coast Trail is trivial. Oh, shoot. Well, I've got a lot of detail in the letter that I sent you, but you can't even see this development from the Pacific Coast Trail. And there are one-acre lots on that map that you just saw, that, that are not very far on the, from the Pacific Coast Trail, closer than this development. So, I mean, I'd go on, if you have any questions, be.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address this this morning? Morning.
Morning. Hello, I'm Craig Carr. I'm at eighty-four five eight seven Searle Street, Corona, California, ninety-three five six two. I'm not good at public speaking, but I'd like to say that I agree with Sir Erickson. Wish you had more time to speak about the astronomy part with Mrs. Moreno, Kim Heflin. I don't agree with Mr. Ferguson quite, that it's a no-brainer that we should accept this. I think enforcement, we're in a remote area, like we, we drive three, four hours to get here from Kennedy Meadows to Visalia. And enforcing these requirements for lighting and for noise pollution and smoke and such with more and more residents is going to be more and more problematic and, and difficult. We haven't had time really to, I see that it's, it's nice to know that there have been some efforts made to reduce the amount of, the amount of changes that are proposed at this time. That's some relief, but I don't think it's enough and I don't agree that we should go ahead with this. It's not a no-brainer, it's still, still unacceptable to a great many of people. I don't know who wrote all those letters in favor, I haven't seen them. We really haven't had much time to consider, we don't have any time to consider this new proposal and, and we don't have any time to get counsel and see what our options are And those are some of the reasons I enforce it. I, I have problems with enforcement and I oppose the, the new proposal. My grandfather homesteaded up there in nineteen twenty and we still have the property that he homesteaded, or part of it anyway, a hundred and sixty acres. I've been going up there all my life and I realize that sometimes change is good, but this proposal is not. It's going to ruin that area that, that we are in. And there's a lot of residents up there that have written a lot of things about good reasons, good rational reasons opposing this measure. And it hasn't really changed that much. The proposal hasn't changed that much to where I think we still have many of the same objections, if not all of them. We, all the years I went up, most of the years I went up as a kid, we had outhouses. But then, we still haven't developed past the point where we have a septic tank yet. We do have trailers and we dump them wherever it's acceptable, you know, dump stations.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lisa Raines, I'm Craig's sister. I would like to say that I agree with Matt Heflin, Frank Carr, Cynthia Moreno. And things still haven't been addressed that makes me think it's a good idea for any of We haven't built up there yet because we're going to build very close to the, the place that is affected here. And we're looking into a good septic tank. We don't think a lot of the septic tanks, especially the septic tanks that a lot of people are going to make up there are that good. We're looking into an innovative septic tank that won't be draining down into the creek because we are right uphill from the creek and so is that, so is that, that hundred and sixty acres that we're, we're looking into today. And there are a lot of Indian artifacts up there. When I went up there a little girl, you could find them going up there, here's a bead, here's an arrowhead, oh, look at all this obsidian, now you have to look for it. And we have those kitchen, what the, the locals call a kitchen, which is a lot of mortar holes up there. When are they going to start chipping away our rocks to get to those? they going to start chipping away our rocks to get to those mortar holes? Not that that's got a whole lot to do with these people coming in, because maybe they would do it anyway, but it's hard to watch things up there. There's, there's lots of acreage up there. They don't need to come into that little valley where we don't even have water. We have to take our own water up there now. The well goes dry within a couple, three days when we're up there with just fourteen, fifteen people. The trees are all dry. We don't need any more people if they're trying to use water, and everybody's going to want their water. I just hope you'll look into it and consider our side and agree with the others who decided against it, and I appreciate your time and your patience and your friendliness, and I've enjoyed being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wish to address this this morning? I just want to make one quick comment on septic systems. It requires a building permit for septic systems. All septic systems are engineered septic systems today, and so the old days of a septic system being one-size-fits-all is long passed, and today's systems are all engineered and have to have perk tests, and so they're designed to be sure we don't have. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Mark Simon, two-two-six, two-two-two-six-two, Brittlewood Circle in Lake Forest, California, and I'm here in favor of this proposal. I am not a landowner in that area, but I would like to be, and I am looking to buy a ten-acre parcel there. I've been coming to Kennedy Meadows for about ten years now, and camping there, and, you know, visiting there, going to Grumpy Bears, and all those places. It's a wonderful place for hiking, it's a wonderful place for camping, so it's, we've had a lot of great memories there with our family, and we would like to be able to buy a place there so that we can continue to enjoy that. And I want to say that this proposal, I think, is very good for the area. You know, one of the things that we value about Kennedy Meadows is the dark sky. We value the uncrowded conditions. We value the quiet, and so that's something that we want to see continued, and I believe that these measures, you know, will allow that, and certainly if we're allowed to purchase a ten-acre parcel up there, that's exactly what we would want to continue to do. So, thank you very much for your time.
Sure. Anyone else? Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Robert Burke. Kind of hard to hear yourself talk. I live at four-nine-seven East California Boulevard, Pasadena, California. In two thousand and seven, I purchased in a joint venture with John Simon and his brother Tom on the forty acres, and what I admired most about, oh, let me back up, and thank, thank God, I mean, thank goodness for Tom and John about creating the parcels, otherwise Dave Eckerson wouldn't be there. So a person like that, of ownership, of new people coming in and have ownership of the area. What I noticed was that Tom, at forty acres, when he first took over, he saw pictures of it, the trees all falling down, all burnt, and it looked really horrible. And then, when he purchased the land and he showed it to me, he cleaned that land up. He made an impact. He took ownership of the area. And what I did was, I've known John for thirty years, he's been my tax accountant, and I said, you know, I trust this man. I trust who he is, where he comes from, and what he's about. And so I, what I loved the most about it, the property line borders up with the national forest, so nothing on these two areas will never be grown, okay? So I'm an owner. I'm one of the people who is going to come in and buy, okay? I've been up there five times from two thousand and seven. When I go to a piece of land, I leave it as good or better than when I touched it, and that's what you're going to get from ownership. What I'm hearing right now is you have a possibility of ten dwellings being, the way the rules are, excuse me, okay, and all we're asking is for two more dwellings, from ten dwellings to two. And I appreciate the owners that are here, because that's why I want to come here, and I want to be part of that. And I think ownership and having the right owners in the units is going to make a difference. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Philip Simon, Mark's brother. I live at three-two-six-seven Acacia Street in Lemon Grove, California. That's in San Diego County, not to be confused with Lemon Cove.
[laughing]
And I am one of those outsiders that they are so afraid of. I come up on a regular basis. I've been camping on the subject property for about five years with my wife and our two little boys, and when we come up there, people don't even know we're there. We don't have a generator. I generate all the electricity we need for our LED lighting and our iPads and whatnot from a fifty-watt solar panel and an RV battery that I bought from Walmart. We have very, very little impact, and we value the same things that all the project opponents have stated. We value the dark skies. We value the peace and quiet. We value the views, and all of those things can be protected with new people coming in. The important thing about this project is that, you know, people are talking a lot about enforcement. What CCNRs do is they are a statement of values to new people coming in. You can't necessarily expect that some random person who buys a piece of land understands how to be a good neighbor in this context, but when you have CCNRs, they say, here's how you cite your structure so that you will not disturb the views of other people. That's in the CCNRs that my uncle prepared. Here's how you protect your lighting so that you don't destroy the night skies. Here's how you can paint your structure and have your roof line and so on and so forth. Here's how you shield your generator. These are things, by stating those values up front, you're going to mitigate a lot of the problems, and you're not even going to have to enforce things. You tell people how to be a good neighbor. Most people will. And then, in addition to that, you have your enforcement mechanisms, but by approving this project and by telling people how to be a good neighbor, how to minimize their impact, it's actually going to make the place better, and the neighbors' concerns are going to be adequately dealt with. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think this is about the most widespread group of people we've ever had at a public hearing, coming from all over the state of California. Yes, sir?
I drove in from Las Vegas.
You might get there while I'm in San Diego.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Yes, I want to hit the road and get back. John McPherson, three-seven-zero-eight Cherbourg Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I agree with the no-brainer and the last gentleman that spoke, and I think it feels like, you know, you've got forty-five people living up there opposing any more people coming, and it doesn't make sense if there's crime increasing. People kind of divert that, you know, when you've got some residents and you've got some people there. And I've owned the property, ten acres, for, since two thousand and seven, haven't done anything with it, because this stuff has been going on with the board here. And it seems like it's time to add value to Kennedy Meadows and to add a future to it. And of course, we appreciate the past and the people who've lived there for a hundred years, but life is about change and creativity, and people do things, and things happen, and services get created, and communities get created, and obviously, like they said, probably, you're going to add fifty people to the already fifty people that are up there, and it's not going to create a major problem. The night skies are beautiful up there. What else did I, water, you know, water, guys, is like oil and gas. It's infinite. You know, they always seem to find more than we'll ever need, and they sell, say this El Nino is coming, and we'll be besieged with water pretty soon. But I'm just thinking that, that we need to create some value in Kennedy Meadows. There's no value to the people that have invested there now to go forward and build anything or do anything, but you guys have it in your hands to add some value to it for the future. Maybe not for some of us, we're getting old and we'll have to give it to our grandchildren, but there'll be some value in the future. And to me, isn't that what money is for? It's to add value for the future, and I appreciate your time, and I know you'll do the right thing, and thank you. And I'm going to drive to Las Vegas.
All right, safe journey. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning?
Hello, my name is Carol Jacobs, and my address is nine-nine-zero-seven-three Pinion Ridge Road, and that's up in Kennedy Meadows. I just wanted to point out that of all the people opposing the development, only one of them is a full-time resident. Most of the people who live in Kennedy Meadows full-time are in favor of having more people, more services, more development, more things to do, and the number-one reason people leave is because there isn't enough to do. They just want to move someplace where there's more going on. Two of the three people who are opposing the development bought the land from us. They knew when they bought the land that they, that we were going to be developing it. They had the opportunity to buy the land that their land overlooks as a buffer, but they didn't. And the third thing I'd like to say is that the beautiful valley that some of the home-sitters are referring to is, in fact, a burn zone. We purchased that land to restore it, and we've spent a great deal of time and money doing that. So now that it looks presentable, suddenly, people care about it. We've cared about it all along. And we'd like to develop it to give middle-income people living in Los Angeles the chance to come up to Kennedy Meadows and own a part of it. Right now, most of the land is owned by home-sitters who own hundreds of acres, and we'd like to open it up to middle-class people like ourselves who can come up and just enjoy a little piece of it themselves. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, twice?
We got another one.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
He saw you were slamming the gates.
You can use this microphone, it's closer for you. Yeah, there you go.
I am the third Simon.
Oh.
My name is John Simon of Simon Jacobs and Simon. I'm the last Simon. Seventy-five years ago, my parents took me on the Pacific Crest Trail for the first time. Use that trail regularly and consistently ever since that time. We love the outdoors, we love the mountains, we love the people who dwell there. My brother has spent hundreds of hours taking a burn area with tremendously dangerous conditions and made it into a much more beautiful place. Trees fall down, and when they fall down and a person is there, they tend to hit people. And like I said, between Tom, the rest of the relatives, and we've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours cleaning that place up. It still has a lot of work to go. I am proud of what we've done and what the plans are. I'm proud of the ecological concern that Tom shows, and I am hoping that you will see that that is something that you can value and join with. So I commend it to you, and I ask for your yes vote.
Thank you, sir.
Thomas Simon, nine-nine-zero-six-three.
The fourth?
I'm sorry?
The fourth Simon?
At least. Nine-nine-zero-seven-three Pinion Ridge Road, Kennedy Meadows, five acres and a septic. Water, there are no dry wells in Kennedy Meadows. The problem with the car well would be galvanized pipe with, you have electrolytic, electrolytic action, and eventually what they have to do is have the pipe taken out, add PVC pipe to the bottom so there's no electrical current flow, and just like my well, that'll fix it. The, we spent, we had a crew on parcel one, which is the one closest to the carve herdic area, for about one month, cleaning, taking down trees, breaking up dead limbs, and it's beautiful now. You can't tell that there was ever a fire there, but with all that going, you know, six people going back and forth across that land, there were no artifacts. You know, that stuff's gone. Then, yeah, on the water, it's, you know, the stuff's in faults, in the, you know, the massive granite, and it flows down from areas north, underground, and the, in the, in the general plan, there's a water report, and which basically says that, you know, there's plenty of water, and it's going to be available even if there's a drought. We have a drought. Wells aren't going down. Static level is staying the same, and it's just, it's not a problem. The, and, oh, yeah, you know, the only, yeah, the only full-time resident who's objected to this is here, and that's the only full-time letter that I, that I'm aware of. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Simon.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, guys. We won't take much of time. I know you've got a little bit tired. But we, my name's Pam Erickson. Live at one-zero-zero-nine-two Meredith Drive in Huntington Beach. We have ten acres. We did buy five acres from him, and we also bought another five acres to secure the area that we bought. It's a beautiful place. It's not a place where, when we bought, we didn't buy to make money. We bought to go to a place that's beautiful, that's not that populated, but there's a lot of places for sale. Somebody just re-zoned for a lot of two-and-a-half acres. We didn't buy to make money. As a matter of fact, we told our children, we're going to spend some of your guys' inheritance money and have a place for your dad, a place for our grandchildren, a place that's beautiful, and it's not set up to build up. It's the last of the wilderness, and we looked for eight years to find an area that had a nice sky view, and it's to pass on to our children and our grandchildren, and hopefully our great-grandchildren. So it's an emotional place because of the beauty and to preserve it. I know they've worked hard, and they've done a great job cleaning up the burn area, but they've got a motive. They want to sell all the property that they have up there. They invested. They speculated. Real estate's a tricky business. It's not, there's not a hundred percent that you're going to get a big return on what you invested in. We want to have a place where it'll be family tradition and hopefully donate the observatory to a school, Ridgecrest, or to somebody if our children aren't going to go forth with that. Even though my grandson already knows a difference between a star and a nebula in the solar system, and so does our two-year-old grand- system and so does our two-year-old granddaughter. So there's, and everything Dave has is given freely to anybody that looks at the website and can see the beautiful things that are up in the sky that don't get to appreciate a lot of the times because we don't have it in the city living. So I thank you guys and I know you're tired and I hope I am the last.
But you're not.
I'm finally got up a little nerve here. I'm Kathy Mayfield, 217 Chambers, Ridge Crest, California. I just wanna say I fully agree with Mrs. Erickson, my sister Cynthia Rains, my mother Lisa Rains, my uncle Craig Carr and Tim Hefner. And that is all I have to thank and thank you so much.
Thank you. Dare I ask, is there anyone else? I appreciate you all making the long trek. I know for most of you it was quite a drive. We always commiserate with Supervisor Ennis because Southern County's a large county, it's the size of Connecticut, but most of us have a lot of national park, forest land that's, once you get up out of the valley floor and into the foothills, there's not a lot of people. And the only, and the only development that's on the other side of this here in Nevada is Kennedy Meadows, which is Supervisor Ennis's district. Anyone else wishing to address us? If not, I'm going to close the hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion and/or action.
Chair, we do have a separate closed session. I'd like to go to closed session for just a short question.
We'll meet with our council in closed session and be back shortly.
Mr. Chairman, you have items A through R as in Randy on your closed session agenda.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. All right, board is back in session and we've met with our council and now we're prepared to have any discussion and/or action on this item.
Mr. Chair, you know, I supported the twenty lot idea for the two pieces. I was, had a lot of concern about the commercial, about that could have been scaled way back. I didn't think they needed to scale it back to zero, but with, you know, with them scaling this back to the level they did, it was way beyond my comfort level. So I, I mean, I support this wholeheartedly. I would have supported the twenty lots on those sites. Didn't support the commercial, the full-blown commercial.
Supervisor Ben?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, just if you look at the timeline and the history of this project, since it has a long history with the county, longer than I've been here, you look at what it was originally, back in 2008 was, it was originally a proposal with sixty-four lots and you could have had potentially two dwelling units per lot. That would have been one hundred and twenty-eight and now it's down to a restricted level of twelve dwelling units on these lots. And I just think that these, this project proponent has really tried to be a good neighbor and bring this to a level of being reasonable and least impactful upon his neighbors in the community of Kennedy Meadows, so I too am also in support of this project.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, early on, when I looked at this, when I first got the project, I was against it. I was against it. I was gonna follow right behind the planning commission, but since it's been cut back to the amount of lots that it is now and with the CCRs and everything in place, I would have to support it at this point.
And I just hope they're enforced as well.
Supervisor Ashida?
The only thing that I have on this project is looking at the topography of some of this. I wanna make sure that RMA, when building, if there are any building permits issued, that we have access for our fire trucks.
Well, I think we have a requirement that for this kind of property, you have to have water tanks for fire suppression.
Absolutely. Mike Washington again. The, this is again, just the zone change, a map would have to come forward and all of those requirements as far as access, fire protection, the studies for hydrology, all of that would still, is still in the future. This is simply just setting the plate to allow a map to potentially come forward.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'd move for approval.
Second. A motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Ashida. Please cast your votes and the votes are unanimous in support of the project overturning the planning commission. And I just wanna make one comment too, that the planning commission did not have this project in front of it. So Supervisor Cox indicated there was a commercial development, there was a greater number of lots on smaller parcels and this has been scaled back a lot. And so I, I would find it difficult to think the planning commission would have opposed this particular project as it now is brought before the board supervisors. That concludes our regularly scheduled, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more item left, don't we? I'm trying to get done here, I guess. Our last item is the purchase of real property, request from General Services to approve September 22nd, 2015, the purchase of property at 5300 West Tullary and 801 South Acre Street in the city of Visalia. Thank you all for coming, appreciate your travels.
Good morning. Let me get the PowerPoint up here. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bales-Lang. My name is John Hess with the County Administrative Office, General Services Department. The presentation this morning is about the proposed purchase of the property at 5300 West Tullary Avenue in Visalia, also known as the Cigna Building or the Tullary Acres Professional Building. The presentation this morning will include some background and property information, a detailed list of the current as well as proposed occupants, details of the acquisition, the next steps that will be coming forward over the next couple of months, and then at the end I'll request at the board, as mentioned by the chairman, September 22nd as the date and time to seek and receive public comments as well as consummate the property purchase. Between now and then, also do three consecutive notices in the newspaper. The county identified a need for space last year in 2014 and since that time, we started identifying spaces that were available that would meet our criteria. The initial need was about fifty thousand square feet. We identified this property and reached out to the listing agent, Burr Commercial. We, in the, as a process of those negotiations or those discussions, we obtained an appraisal of the property, began negotiating and also hired Matt Graham with Hyde Commercial to assist us on the part of negotiations as well as financial analyses. The county submitted a letter of interest in March and then followed up with a revised letter of interest in June. The county and the owner have been working on the terms of the negotiation since that time and last month we came to agreement on the purchase agreement and are ready to bring that forward. The current owner is the Weingart Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization. The entire property is fourteen point four-four acres. The office building is about a hundred and eighty thousand square feet and two stories. The, there are one thousand one hundred and seventy-two parking spaces, which far exceeds the minimum requirement for office space in Visalia. The building was originally constructed in 2000 with fifty thousand square foot addition. If you kinda look on the aerial, towards the top end of the building, that top third is the addition of the building. There's a full-service generator on site that can power the building for up to a week. There's a full-service cafeteria on site as well. The building's in good condition. The vacant area to the north will require some potentially carpet, a little bit of painting and certainly some office furniture and cubicles. The vacant area on the south end will require future build-out and the property also is large enough to accommodate future construction of buildings on site. This table outlines the list of current occupants, Cigna, IRS and the Pearson Testing Group. As you can see, Cigna is of course the largest of those tenants. There's approximately seventy-six thousand square foot available in the building in two different sections, which will show a floor plan here in a moment. Staff is evaluating the most efficient and effective use for the available square footage and there are plenty of good options that would work well for this building relative to using that available square footage for county purposes. This is a floor plan of the two stories, the top part being the first floor and the bottom part being the second floor. The green areas are available and vacant and the red areas are occupied by the three tenants. Most of those are, again, Cigna. The portion on the right side of the screen is fifty, the fifty thousand plus or minus fifty-five thousand square feet that was added on for a home developer some years ago and that is, that is built out very well with offices and quite, you know, good office flow and there would need to be cubicles and office furniture in that area. The portion on the south end, the twenty-five thousand five hundred on the, on the first floor, the owner has recently added a hallway to kinda demise the space in two different smaller, two-thirds and one-thirds sections. That is open right now and would need to be kinda final build-out as we proceed. Here's pictures of the two main entrances to the building. The picture on the left is the entrance near the Cigna at the middle of the building and the picture on the right is at the north end of the building. It's kinda giving you an idea of the current, you know, condition, the look of the building. So the price that has been negotiated is sixteen point nine seven million dollars, which is approximately ninety-four dollars per square foot. We are anticipating a final closing cost of one hundred and fifty thousand. That's a very conservative, high estimate, but we, that is, that could obviously change. The tenants currently generate one point three million dollars in base rental income. There's also common area maintenance charges and other charges in addition to that. Cigna's lease will expire next June, however, Cigna and the property owner have been working together on finalizing a new ten-year lease. The details of that lease will be reviewed during the escrow and due diligence process by the county and will be critical to us moving forward with finalizing this property acquisition. This outlines the details of the financing of the acquisition.
Okay. Thanks, John. Chief Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, I thought I'd take this, this slide. The, these dollar amounts are included in the recommended budget that will be coming to your board next week, next week, next month on the September 15th. Let's start with debt service trust fund. The, as, as most, some of you know, we made our last COPs debt payment on August 14th. We had approximately eighty to eighty-five percent of that payment sitting at the trustee bank. So the balance that you see up there is a projected fund, is a projected balance as of the end of June 2016. We were positioning ourselves to make the, you know, we don't, we didn't have to make the COPs payment, which is approximately seven million dollars, and we had another four million sitting in that trust fund with the expectation of paying off our Chevron debt, our last remaining long-term debt of approximately three point seven million. But this opportunity came to us and before I say anything further, I wanted to thank the team. We developed a really good team to review this, review this process. It's been very long. It seems like we started a decade ago. But we hired Matt Graham. Matt, glad to have you on board. John Hess, standing in front of you. Jennifer Nielsen, also helping from council's office. She should be able to fit in this work while getting married at the same time. Good job, Jennifer. And our Robert Newby also participated. Thank you, Robert. So that collective, you know, knowledge base is working with the infamous Doug Burr. Finally, Doug. Welcome, Doug. This has been a long time coming, but back to the numbers. So we, this is the, gonna be included in next year's budget. We expect to have, we expected to have around eleven million dollars left in the trust fund and this is such a, this is a very good opportunity for the county to address space needs, generate some rental revenue and, and position ourselves well for space needs going forward. So that's the debt service. One-time mandates we received in the state budget, the governor's gonna finally pay back the 2004 mandate reimbursements that he had deferred since 2004, basically, and that amounts to two point three million dollars. The remaining eight hundred thousand of the three point one comes from lawsuit proceeds that the county received from, from Office Depot. It's a long-term, year lawsuit that just settled last fiscal year for eight hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is consistent with the protocols that this, that this board has been outstanding in following in terms of using one-time monies for a one-time purpose. And this is a very good one-time purpose as far as I'm concerned. The tran trust fund's an interesting, interesting process. You know, we, we used to issue trans on a yearly basis. The general fund has built up enough cash to where it doesn't need to do that anymore. And then in looking at that process, we have a trust fund out there that's accumulated monies over the years and it's one-time. We're gonna use it. So two point three million and the remainder is just additional one-time monies that we needed to get to seventeen point three million of nine hundred thousand. So again, this is a good investment. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Hess and the team that was, that was built. They did a great job. This just starts the process. We'll be able to buy this, this facility in cash and then, and have eighty thousand square feet available for our employees while it generates a minimum of one point three million dollars a year. I think it's a good investment and I wholeheartedly recommend it. I'll be, and I'm available to answer any questions. I don't know if that's the last slide, John.
I think one or two more next steps.
All right. Any questions? Our chair?
No, no question. I know he has one more slide to go.
Yeah, go ahead. Tom?
So then, if approved this morning, these are just kinda outlining the quickly next step. We will publish for three consecutive weeks and consistent with state law. We will bring it back in about a month, September 22nd, for final public comments and consummation, at which point we would then execute the purchase agreement and begin the escrow due diligence process, which is sixty-five days, which is, we're hoping enough time and a lot of time for us to be able to review all the critical documents that are gonna be of very, very specific interest to the county to move forward. All said and done, we're hoping by December 1st or so, all of that process would be fully complete and it becomes the county's building. That's it.
One last thing.
Yes.
One last thing and I forgot to include it in my comments and I apologize. You know, the purchase price that we have in this, in this presentation reflects the expectation that the Cigna lease will be extended for ten years. As Mr. Hess indicated, the Cigna lease is currently gonna expire in June of 2016. We've been, we've been not allowed to see that lease until we get this process going and we look forward to doing that. It's our understanding that, that Cigna has expressed interest in extending the lease, which we're enthusiastic about, but if it's not extended, it would affect the eventual purchase price and that's something that this process will allow us to do, will do additional due diligence. We didn't include that, I believe we included that language in the, in the purchase agreement, I'm not sure, I'm looking at you, Jennifer. But if it's not in there, certainly we can back out the escrow at any time, which starts next month, September 22nd. So there's still a lot more to do, but this is a long time coming. Been looking forward to this day for some time and again, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Rousseau is correct that you do have terms, both in your agreement and your proposed escrow instructions, that would allow you to make a change of mind if the circumstances change.
Supervisor.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make mine brief. You know, ninety-four dollars a foot, we could not build this building for three times that amount, so this is a good deal for the county. Actually, I think it, it sets us up to have all of our future space needs covered regardless of who's leasing there for the next ten to twenty years. We're not gonna be having to worry about finding, you know, Robert Newby shouldn't be getting those calls for, I need two thousand feet, five thousand feet, twenty-five thousand feet, whatever it is. I think this is gonna set us up for the next couple of decades and completely take care of our space needs. It's affordable and we're paying for it, we're not borrowing money. So, team, great job. I think everyone's worked diligently on it, so thank you.
Supervisor Ashida?
Soon after Supervisor Cox and I were elected, we wanted to do a county plan, facilities plan, as to future expansion of county buildings. And we did the study on that and what we were looking at is building a building next to HR. But the figure came out, estimated cost for that building was somewhere around three hundred dollars a square foot to build a facility from the ground up.
Plus the parking structure.
Yes, and we had a parking structure on top of it. So this is a fantastic deal. I'm glad we are probably the only buyer in town for this building because otherwise I would expect there to be quite a competition for substantially more money. So I wholeheartedly support the purchase of this building.
Real quick, I'd just also like to throw out some compliments to the group. I know that you guys put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this and there was a lot of due diligence done to get us to this point and now we begin the due diligence period officially as a part of this transaction, but I, I think it's a great thing for the county. I don't know when Government Plaza was purchased or the, so if that was purchased in the mid nineties, that was the biggest, baddest building at that time and the county came in and bought it and it has served us quite well and will continue to serve the county very well. But like my colleagues have mentioned, this will take care of our space needs well into the future. I, I have to think that hopefully the county won't grow too much more to will reach that capacity during my lifetime, but that'll for sure last the rest of these guys' lifetimes because they're all a bit older. I, I think the county can feel very, very good about this and it is consistent with the board's mission of providing good space, good quality working space for our employees and maximizing the taxpayer dollar, which Supervisor Ashida... and maximizing the taxpayer dollar, which Supervisor Ashida brought up, and so did Supervisor Cox, about the ninety-three dollars a square foot for commercial property is just outstanding. And with prevailing wage and all the other requirements that we are held to as a governmental agency, there's no way in hell we would have built it for anywhere close to that. So this is a, a good use of taxpayer dollars, and we are not borrowing to do so. So, good job, team, and I, I feel very good about this on the county's part.
I was feeling good about it. I, I just wanted to comment a little bit about the financing of this, and contrasting it with the Government Plaza building, which was bought from Nationwide Insurance. I was not on the board at that time, but I remember the purchase, and it was a similar situation, a large, very modern, at that time very modern, structure that was being vacated by an insurance company and available on the market. County wisely purchased that property. They borrowed every dime, I think, to buy that property. In fact, we have just finished paying off some of the last bond payments that were used to, to purchase that structure. Here we are, building a, buying a building substantially larger, more parking, more, more developed, at a wonderful price, and we're not borrowing anything. I mean, that is a compliment to the, the prestigiousness of this board in, in terms of getting ourselves out of debt and being, you know, living within our means. And I'm so grateful that we're in that position, and we're not having to go out, because I mean, we'd, it'd be, it would still be worth it to borrow the money. I mean, at this price, again, as for the point, reasons brought out by other folks, we could not construct anything like this for one-third of the price. And so it would still be a good, a good deal. It's a better deal when you can pay cash for it, and so I just want to make that comment. Supervisor Ennis?
Well, I was wondering if I was going to get to make a comment.
Absolutely.
But, no, just kudos to what everybody said. Thanks for everybody, your hard work, your diligence, and putting this thing together. And John, Dean, thanks for all the folks out there that made this thing happen, because it is a good deal. I think we bought it for twenty-five cents on the dollar, so, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, with all the positive things that have been said, I don't want Doug to think he's going to get another nickel.[1680.64][1680.64](Laughter). And I would make the motion to approve staff recommendation.
Motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes. And not surprising, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
And now we have items in closed session, council, we need to take care of.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do, you have items C through R as in randy. And as far as I can tell, and there are no announcements. I don't anticipate any announcements.
Very good.